Right.
To vote, you have to be a resident and you have to eighteen. When we get down under number one, anybody has anything they'd like to say or any questions? Be more than glad to discuss them. Uh, even though there's no elected officials, I'm gonna run the meeting, somebody asked to do it. Okay, moving on, approval of agendas, anyone they have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
If there's no additions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the men- the agenda is submitted.
Support.
Move in supported to approve the agenda as submitted. So, I guess you're gonna count. All those in favor, raise your hand please.
You got your hand up Jim, you're voting?
No, I'm not, I'm stating.
Really?
I'm reading that.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, thirteen.
Okay, all those opposed? All those abstaining? We got one abstained.
Really?
Moving on. Approve the minutes from last year, if you look at the second page there is minutes, what occurred last year? Uh, normally if there's any salary increases, they are on the agenda. Uh, tonight, there are no salary increase requests this year. There's some agendas and stuff up here, folks, if you wanna grab one. Please sign the signing sheet if you would do. I guess we would need a motion to approve the minutes.
So.
Support.
Move in supported to approve the minutes for the March eleventh, two thousand fourteen meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Abstaining? Okay, moving on. Item number one, any matters that concerns the residents, anyone like to, uh, discuss any township affairs with the now's opportunity?
Jim, did you vote yes, kind of the last thing?
No, he didn't vote at all. I guess there's not too much new in the township, uh, I tried to get everything in the newsletter, that's why it was cramped, I hope everybody got a chance, uh, to look at it. Uh, the price of limestone's going up ten percent this year, which is about fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the county's giving us a smidgen less road money, but they're gonna give every township ten thousand dollars for ditching. It has to be spent on ditching and in two thousand fifteen. So, when the water gets higher in a week or two, we'll look at the worst place and see what we can do in that regard. We have a couple of spots we've looked at in past years. We did a little ditching last year, we did a little two years ago. Uh, but the ditching's expensive, you know, and, uh, hopefully we can do something there. Uh, we're looking into possibly putting some asphalt millings on a mile or a mile and a half of Putty Gut Road by county lines to firm up the base so it doesn't go so bad in the spring. Uh, we were hoping to get free ones from the county, cause they're doing twenty-six mile road, but we're out of line. So, we gotta buy. And they are, last year's price was eight dollars a ton. And you have to put at least a thousand ton to the mile, or don't waste your time, cause it won't hold up. So, we're looking into that. Cause, uh, the subsurface on Putty Gut, as you guys know, always gets mushy and crazy in the spring.
Who is?
So, we almost did it last year, but we were doing the north-south roads, this year we're doing east-west. So, we're gonna try and do it this year. If the limestone hadn't gone up, we'd had enough money to do it right there. So, we're gonna have to look here and there and see if we can come up with enough money to do that. Hopefully that'll keep that from going bad in the spring.
Uh. Bill, wouldn't they say our bridge replacement projects will be complete?
We're doing two bridges this year, we're doing the one on Hessen right by twenty-six. That was federal money, uh, that we applied for. And we're doing the one on Hessen by Laboon Road or Labon Road. The one there's gonna be two steel culverts, the one down by twenty-six is gonna be a huge cement pre-made thing, but it's not like a culvert, it's more like a box culvert. Usually they shoot for like August, but I think the one by twenty-six is looking later, now they're looking at September, October. And they anticipate eight to twelve weeks on that one, by twenty-six. And the one over here should take about a week. So, at that point, in the last four years, we have done four bridges that were bad. So, currently on our roads, we don't have any, we won't have any bridges with, uh, load limitations, which is a good thing. So, I don't know, not much else new, uh, we're hoping the thaw comes out nice and easy and the roads don't go bad, because it costs money to fix them and they do. Uh, they were really good. We'll see what happens in the spring. So, that's about all, I've got, uh, go on, anybody else have anything?
You know, I got a question, Bill, has the county gave an indication that the sales tax referendum passes, how much additional funding we're gonna be seeing for our roads?
Not for each township, uh, they're in favor of it because of this road money, but the first two years after the if it's approved, the first couple of years, even the county's not gonna hardly get anything. It's all going M.D.O. Then the third year, then it'll start trickling down to the counties and ultimately to us. So.
I told, I, I informed Lieutenant Governor Kelly that every red cent would be spent on roads there.
Yeah, depends if you get what they promised.
Right.
And we have no control over that.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
Why is the majority of money going to state when there's supposedly legislative law that divides the money up proportionally already on the books?
Well, road money is split in two things, one's constitutional and one's statutory. All townships get the constitutional one. In any, some townships, mostly villages and cities that own their own streets, they get the other one. Now, in the grand scheme of things, M.D.O. gets more money than anybody else.
And they have to lose roofs.
Well, but they have expensive roads. And then the county, and I'm trying to think who comes in third, but they're the big two. And then the rest go to various other things. So, M.D.O.'s gonna rule roofs whenever it comes to money, and that's the way it is. And, uh, and M.D.O. has a lot of legacy costs involved, so I think that's why they're, they wanna grab the majority of the money in the first two years to pay off their debt, then they'll start distributing it better. So, you need to really look at the language in that law as to who's getting the money and, uh, make your decision. Okay, anybody else have anything? Go on. Okay, at this point, we're up to number two, which is adjournment.
Make motion to adjourn.
Support.
Ween, I believe.
Who?
Move in supported to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Moving on.
Past years, there were some exciting ones.
Moving on, now we're up to the other agenda for the regular meeting.
What time do you have for the record?
Seven ten.
Yep, seven ten. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, we're gonna wave the budget flag, cause we just did it ten minutes ago. And we're up to approval of the agenda, does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
If there are no alterations, I made the motion to approve the agenda.
Support. Move in supported, we just get to vote on this. Move in supported to approve the agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of Tuesday, February tenth.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from February tenth, twenty fifteen, um, Casco Township.
Support.
Move in supported to approve the minutes for the meeting of February tenth, is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the financial report, Colleen?
We began the month with four hundred and six thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, and we took in sixty-two thousand, twenty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents and made disbursements of one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and three cents, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of four hundred and twenty-six thousand, four seventy-one ninety-nine.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the financial report as submitted.
Support.
Move in supported to accept the financial report as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is correspondence. Item A, it's the annual Richmond Chamber of Commerce breakfast, which will be held on April tenth. All the board members are invited to go, I think three of us went last year. And the township will reimburse you fifteen dollars.
Do you know who's speaking this year?
The same as last year, everybody at the table.
No, who's speaking?
Who's speaking?
The guest speaker?
The four supervisors, John Moore and Mr. Hackel and.
Yeah, but he's the moderator, he just introduces.
And whoever's there from the county commissioners and Sinclair County.
Yeah, we had the judge last year.
Yeah, he's the moderator.
Judge Will Duke moderates it.
He just introduces.
He just introduces the folks.
Right.
Anyway, the cost is fifteen dollars, you gotta get up before breakfast. Five dollars for elected officials with the R.S.V.P. So, that's about it. Moving on. Item B, metro planning workshop. The county planning's having a workshop on March the thirty-first, and it's covering emergency management, transportation, revenue, conditional rezoning, water trails and void enforcement. So, we're gonna get these to Z.B.A. and the planning commission. And if anyone here would like to go, uh, we ask that you get notice into our clerk by the twenty-fifth. And she will make reservations and the township will pick up the cost, which is around, how much is it?
Fifteen.
Seventeen.
No?
Fifteen dollars. Okay. Moving on. Item C, this is the yearly Lennox EMS employee recognition dinner, it's going to be March twenty-first. And you've all been invited, so feel free to do what you choose. Okay. Since there's no questions on those, we'll move on to old business, item A. Farmland rental approval. We changed the ordinance last year, so it would be possible to rent fifty acres of our parkland for farming, because it was, hadn't been worked in twelve years, it was gonna go to brush. So, we put a ad in the paper for two weeks and we received two, four, six, uh, eight bids. And the highest bid that we received was from R.C. Farms for thirty-five hundred and one dollar a year, which is basically seventy dollars.
Per acre?
Yeah, fifty acres, seventy dollars an acre, thirty-five hundred. And they threw a dollar on top in case it was a tie.
Okay.
So, uh, also included is a copy of the rental agreement. I mean, I can read them all if you want me to, whatever you choose. Your bids.
We've got them.
It's really straightforward.
Okay, and everyone that bid, I have a copy for you tonight, if you wanna, then I won't have to mail it, I was gonna mail a copy of this list to everybody that bid. So, if you want one before you leave, come up, I have one for you. So, we would need a motion to approve the bid to rent the farmland for two years from R.C. Farms and also approve the agreement.
I make the motion.
Support.
Move in supported. Is there any discussion? I guess we'll have a roll call, both please.
Now, Bill said what the motion should be and they.
They just so moved, they want, that's what they wanted.
So, do you wanna repeat the minutes, do you want the motion to include?
I need you to repeat the motion, because you said it and it.
Okay.
So, just tell me what you said and you're good.
Okay, to, the motion would be to accept the bid
Okay.
to rent the fifty acres of parkland for two years to R.C. Farms
Alright.
and approve the rental agreement and close.
Okay, thank you. Ready for the roll call.
Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. New business, item A, public hearing and approval of proposed budget. Up on the table here is a copy of the proposed budget, if you didn't grab one, feel free to do so. It's pretty much exactly like, uh, last year, very little difference. Uh, we just stacked it in a little bit here, and we have to put a little bit in for elections, cause we ran into red on elections.
Right.
They cost what they cost, running elections.
What time are you open, you're opening the public hearing now?
No, I'm just kinda forgetting some parameters, now I'll open the public hearing. In a minute, I'll open the public hearing, anybody wishes to speak, please raise your hand. If you have any questions or comments on, uh, proposed budget, everyone will have a chance to speak and, uh, then eventually, we'll close the public hearing and hopefully get a motion to approve the recommended budget. So, at this point in time, I'm gonna open the public hearing, anyone wants to speak on budget, I'd just like to mention that this budget indicates a millage to be levied of one mil for the road and a general fund millage of point seven seven five seven, exactly the same as last year. So, we get about three-quarters of a mil for the general fund and one mil for the roads. And that's what produces our revenue besides what we get from the state. Okay, anybody like to speak, anything to say on the budget? We'll hit a few high points and basically, you open the first page, I'm gonna tell you that we anticipate a revenue of six hundred and eighty-eight thousand and four dollars. Okay. Last year, not two thousand fourteen, but actually the year before, our revenue was six ninety-three. So, it's actually, we project five thousand less than it was two years ago. And that's due to various things, but it's almost identical. If you go back to page number three, I guess it is? Felt like four, but I guess it's three. And it'll have the expected total expenditures of six hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars, which is three thousand dollars less than our anticipated revenue. Now, the last couple of years, we've been, at the end of the year, when we get our audit, we've been about between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars in the black. So, we're trying to save all we can. Uh, later this year, we're gonna be looking at whether we should, uh, remodel our hall. The offices really haven't been done in forty-five years. And whether we would have an addition put on to get more office space, cause when that thing was built, there was no computers in sight. And, uh, it's very jammed up with the hardware and even the wire. So, we're trying to save every nickel we can, so we can afford to do something with the hall and stuff. And the next one after page three is our liquor control. Basically, what that is, everybody with a liquor license pays the state. The state gives us about half of it. And we have somebody go out to every location once a month and inspect it. And the money comes from the state and goes to the inspector, it doesn't cost the residents of Casco Township anything. If you're wondering what that is. The last page, that's our park rec fund. And I guess we don't have the grand total on this one.
No, we don't.
We've got about, what, three thirty? Oh, it would be on the. It was on the financial report.
It was here.
Should be in exact, I didn't jot it down. We actually have a lot of money in that, but we really haven't come to a decision of what we could do. It's around, it's over three hundred thousand.
Yeah, three seventy.
We really haven't come to a decision on what we could do that would help the residents of Casco Township, uh, owing to the limitation that we don't have a police force. So, if you develop a facility, who's gonna police it, who's gonna protect it if somebody wants to damage it or do things they're not supposed to do? We have no land available at the hall here, where many townships have like a little park by the hall. We're full, we have no land, we barely have a parking lot. So, but if something arises or we come up with a better idea, if anybody has an idea, let me know, I'm glad to hear it. That's about it for the budget, uh, if anybody has any questions, be glad to try and answer them.
Bill, I have a question here, um, on page two, line item nine two zero, it says public utilities, what is that?
That would be our electric.
For the hall?
For the hall.
Okay.
And overhead lighting.
Overhead lighting's on that other one.
Yeah, streetlights is a lot more than that.
Yeah, and our heat.
And we do pay a lot for streetlights, we have about forty-five streetlights.
Yeah.
Uh, the ones that are on the highways on our borders, Iver Township and Lennox Township, both share the cost of those. Uh, we have not convinced Columbus to do likewise, or.
But, okay, Division Road is Columbus Township's road.
I know.
But we pay the lighting?
Well, all three of the roads, Casco paid the lighting all by itself for twenty years. So, two years ago, I gotta hold all the neighboring townships and said, hey, you know, we love you, can you pay half? Two said yeah, the other one said no, but I'm, I'm gonna work on it. So, I mean, it helps their residents as much as they help ours, and you gotta admit, when you're coming home on a rainy, foggy, snowy night, you really don't see those lights at the intersection. So, but they're costly, it costs us like nine hundred dollars a month for those lights almost.
Yeah.
So, they do cost a lot of money.
Any other question?
Anybody else have anything? Well, then it would be appropriate to have a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close, uh, the public hearing.
Support.
Move in supported to close the public hearing, any discussion? Did I tell you we were gonna do a roll call on that one too, Bremer?
No, we didn't do a roll call.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries.
Okay, time for closing?
And it is
Nine.
seven twenty-four. Okay, the other part of item A is approval of the proposed budget.
I move that the proposed budget be approved, approved as submitted.
I'll support that.
Move in supported to approve the proposed budget, is there any discussion? This one will have a roll call vote.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Patty, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dave?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item B, assessor's contract, this is a yearly contract we have with our assessor, Shelley Baumeister. In my opinion, she does an excellent job and we're very fortunate to have her, because you can, you read in the papers, some of the other townships have not been so fortunate. Uh, I believe this is the third year in a row for the same amount of money. We basically pay her ten dollars a parcel, which comes out to nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars a year. So, we would need approval of the contract.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt, um, the assessor contract.
Support.
Move in supported to approve the assessor's contract, is there any discussion?
She's kept us out of hot water.
Oh, yeah.
No, she, she does a very good job. And it isn't like you can, anybody can just do it, you have to have somebody. And, uh, like I say, we're fortunate to have her on. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Patty, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Patty, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, the next item, item C is computer maintenance agreement. Uh, we've used network for the last couple of years. And, uh, we hit some bumps this year, but that was due to several factors. Things seem to be smoothing out, but we did get prices from two other firms. But their prices are based on service and X amount of dollars per call to your location. Uh, the network is basically cheaper and it's unlimited calls to your location. Now, how many calls are really necessary? I don't know, cause like I said, we had a lot of problems, we switched BSNA, which is our accounting software. Uh, we switched over and updated and we had a lot of problems with that. We had a domain problem where a Korean got in our domain. And every time you started using the program, it went to Korea, and we were shut down for a day. And we upgraded all the computers to Windows seven, so we had some problems this year. The other firms are, they give you a whole range of prices and they're not bad prices if you had really new equipment and they never had to come up to see you. Though we certainly have no guarantee of that happening. I put in the update, it was three thousand dollars for the year for network, the same as it's been, I think, the last two years. And that would be my recommendation.
I hope that you accept the, uh, the from network for services.
I'll support that.
Move in supported to approve the service contract with network computers. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, have a roll call vote, please.
What did I know? Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Patty, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item D, website agreement, even though the township's had a website for a reasonable length of time, uh, if you've gone on our website, you say, what's going on, it's been screwed up all year. And everybody we talked to, even the people that have been kinda doing it, say it has to be revamped. The format that was used is no longer viable, so we got some prices. And our township planner is one of them, we got a price from network, it was a verbal price over the phone, because they're currently doing it, and we got a price from, what was the name of the other?
His name is, um, Jeff, Sean Sager, but it, his company is called, right here, Full Access Website.
Okay. Uh, so they, they came out and looked at it. Rod seems to have a lot of things, a lot of ideas, and he also has our maps and he has all the other stuff. So, I guess I would have, cause Patty is our website person. So, before we, I guess I would run her recommendation.
Right, um, as you know, he sent me out to IT right to do some training. Well, I got here, I got through the training, but. Well, I got here, I got through the training, but it was way over my head. There's no way I could have done it. So, I've been talking to Rod, and I've been talking to his, also Sean. And Rod is the one I suggest we go with, because the other people really don't know about our, our ordinance book, how to get it on the website, and stuff like that, and he already knows.
They've been very good, oh, from county commissioners.
Right, and...
For the township in general.
And he has given us a good price, you know?
He had the best price of...
Of the ones we looked at.
I have the most confidence in him.
And, and I do, and he said he would train me. And it's been a nightmare trying to do that website, 'cause every time I update something, one of the links goes back to where it was, and I call Network, and they fix it, and then I try it again, and then...
Is this the guys who trained at the piano floor?
No, he's been long gone, but it's time that, but, but we still have front page, which is way...
They're gonna say we had to get our piano there.
I think it's about time we have a...
A bank.
Competence and consistent, uh, support for the website.
So, Patty's recommendation is clear zoning. And the price they gave us was twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the setup, and a five hundred dollar yearly maintenance fee.
Right.
Uh, they're the cheapest of the three we had. And we looked at a couple of other ones that really weren't viable. So, at this point, we would need a motion.
I would move that we accept the bid from ClearZone for, uh, construction and maintenance of our website.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported to hire ClearZone for the website. Any discussion? Hearing none, have a roll call vote.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Patty, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay. Item E, budget adjustment. March is the end of our fiscal year, so when we get to April 1st, as you look in that proposed budget, you see all those little line items. The auditors don't wanna see any that are in the red. So, we basically have four items on here out of the general fund, and an eighty-dollar transfer from one part to another on the liquor fund. And hopefully that'll get, nothing will come up this month that'll put any of those line items in the red.
Right, we hope.
So, we need a motion.
Is there any questions about the budget? Okay. May I make a motion to approve the budget amendments as submitted?
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the budget amendments, and are you gonna read these?
Yeah, I can read them for you.
Okay.
Will be account 101, 101, 707, elections for one thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and seven cents. For 101, 101, 710, for ZBA, ten dollars. For transportation, account 101, 101, 860, for two hundred dollars. And for miscellaneous, account 101, 101, 956, for forty-two fifty. That comes to a total of five thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and seven cents. We will be taking it out of our attorney fees, which has a balance of fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. After taking away the five thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and seven cents, we'll have a balance of eighty-five, eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. In our liquor fund, um, we will have to, it'll go to account 2, 212, 101, 726, for supplies, eighty dollars. And that amount will come out of our miscellaneous of 2, 12, 101, 956, and I'll leave a balance of a hundred and twenty-two dollars in miscellaneous.
Okay. So, is moved and supported?
Who supported it? Patty made the motion for it.
I know somebody did, early. Colleen, I believe.
I did, short-term, I remember.
Moved and supported. Any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Patty, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item F is the liquor inspection. Remember before I kinda outlined what our liquor inspection was? There are currently eleven locations in Casco Township that get inspected every month for a liquor inspection. Unfortunately, or fortunately, years ago, we had like three bars and like three, four party stores. The bars pay much more money to the state, some as high as sixteen hundred dollars a year. The party stores pay a hundred dollars a year. So, as we keep getting more party stores with all the gas stations, as we're getting up to eleven, there was a time that, because this guy's paying sixteen hundred, we were getting a lot more money than we were spending. So, at that time, they were paying the liquor inspector thirty-three dollars a visit. And they were making, they had a lot of money left over. Well, as we keep being, keep adding gas stations, we're still at thirty-three dollars a visit, but we're not generating that much money, because the gas station's only paying a hundred dollars a year. So, we still have roughly ten thousand in fund equity in the liquor control, but it's going down at over a thousand dollars a year. So, what I'm proposing is that we cut it five dollars a, an inspection, which will cut the losses down in half. And if a bar would open, we'd be back in the black. Otherwise, uh, when our fund balance gets down to like maybe five thousand, or even before, we may have to visit this again and drop it again. But it's unrealistic to keep it at thirty-three dollars, uh, due to the fact that it doesn't generate that. So, the proposal is to change the liquor inspection pay scale from thirty-three dollars to twenty-eight.
You might wanna mention that it is, he is the constable.
The constable is the person, he's elected. He's the person that does the liquor inspections.
From thirty-three to what?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. I make a motion to approve the pay grade from thirty-three dollars, change it to twenty-eight for our constable, Wayne Bubka.
I'll support that.
Okay, moved and supported. Any discussion? Wayne's not buying it, right? Dan, is your motion gonna say to start April 1st? Because he's doing another inspection this month, but the fiscal year starts April 1st.
Yeah, to start with our fiscal year.
Okay.
Motion.
And it's supported. Okay, moved and supported. Any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Joe? Patty, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Next item is payment of the bills. Everybody grab the package. You have a list of all our bills for the month? And now we have to vote to pay them.
Any questions on the bills?
I make a motion that we, um, we, the township pay the bills to the legislature submit.
Support.
Moved and supported to pay the bills. Any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Patty, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is citizens' comments. Anyone has anything they'd like to say? Now's your opportunity. Uh, we asked you to sign in before, we said there would be a reward. Uh, when we adjourn, we're gonna cut up the cake. So, because you stayed, everyone that's here can get a piece of cake. I'm getting it. And the reason we've got cake was... The reason we're having cake is Joe Stevens, our trustee, has just retired from the National Guard after thirty-three years. So, we got a cake. Thank Joe for all his service.
Yes.
And does anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
I could have a question, going back to that farm ground, the old park. That thirty-five hundred and one dollars, was that for a two-year contract?
No, each year.
Each year?
Each year.
In other words, seven thousand bucks for two years to work?
But our taxes on it are gonna be twenty-seven hundred.
No, no, I'm just saying.
In the loop.
For a hundred and forty today? Kind of pricey, you know? Yeah, right. I don't raise fraud.
Oh, well. Anybody else have anything? If not, we're up to adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support.
Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stay on adjournment.